I'd like to call to order the school board meeting for the evening of Tuesday, January 13th, 2015. It's hard to say that. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're making me laugh this evening, it hurts. Thank you all for coming this evening. Do we have any adjustments to this evening's agenda?
We just have one, which is really sort of an extension of the superintendent's report, which is that we left off our library instructional technology specialist's report, so they will be presenting, I guess, in advance of the superintendent's report with concession of the board.
How does the board feel about that?
Feels good.
Okay. Excellent. Any other adjustments? Thank you. Before we begin, this is my first opportunity to address the community as the Cape Elizabeth School Board Chair. I was unable to attend last month's meeting due to a professional obligation that called me out of state, and I just wanted to indulge myself for just a moment, if you would be so kind, to allow me, is to first thank John Christie, who was the previous school board chair, for his tireless, thoughtful, and inclusive leadership. And, John, you've left some pretty big shoes to fill, and I only hope I can live up to that expectation. I'd also like to express my appreciation for my fellow board members, who have put their trust in me to lead them in this coming year, so I appreciate your faith in my abilities. But most importantly, on behalf of the board, I just wanted to take a moment to extend our sincere appreciation for the dedication of our teachers, administrators, and staff, who bring to their roles, day in and day out, on behalf of our students. The work is not always easy, resources are not plentiful, or abundant, or overly so, and you are always racing the clock, and there's always something new. We know, and we appreciate your service. Most successful organizations use the feedback that they receive from those who are on the front line. In my tenure here as chair, I would really love to open up those lines of communication as much as we possibly can, because those who are serving our children, day in and day out, and those on the front line, have that wisdom and experience that we need to hear from you. For those of you who haven't found it yet, our email link is right on our school board page, and we're all fairly visible within the community, and always open and happy to have a cup of coffee. We are fortunate that, as a community, we have prioritized the creation of a strategic plan. This plan is a common understanding of where we are going and what we dream to do. This was no small task. It has taken hundreds, if not thousands, of community hours for our volunteers to create this plan. And I just wanted to say one thing about the strategic plan by moving forward. I've had a little time on my hands lately, so I've been reading this book, it's called The Martian, by Andy Ware. And I'm not going to tell you how it ends, but I can tell you, my favorite line in this book is, this man is stranded, has anyone read the book? Don't ruin it, it's a good read. He's stranded on Mars, and they need to come up with a plan to get him off the planet. And one of my favorite lines is when he realizes how doomed he is, he says, "No plan ever fully survives implementation." And the reality is, even the best-laid plans often go astray. But what's important is that we come together as a team, and that we work to overcome problems together, with our eye on the prize. And I'm confident that we can all come together as a community to accomplish that. And if we can come together closer, my tenure as your chair, I hope has then can be called successful. I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Jo, I got a little distracted with a leaky cup over here.
That's okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Nobody felt it?
No one got hurt? No. Just wet. Just wet. It'll die.
May I have a motion to approve the school board minutes?
Yes, I move that we approve the school board minutes as listed in the agenda items 2A, B, and C.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. I believe next on our agenda are comments from our student representatives.
All right, well, I'll start. We just got back from the lovely two-week break, I think that everybody really appreciated that rest. In December, I don't know if it was noted last meeting, because I wasn't here, but mock trial won their fourth straight state title, which was so exciting, and I know we're going to talk about that later, as well. Ms. Page does ask that they are recognized second, so that she has time to get here.
You can do that.
We are getting ready for midterms, which I think is a big focus, especially for the freshmen, getting them adjusted. The Upper Link program's been working pretty hard to give tips and guidance towards the most successful ways to study for midterms. And then, we're moving into second semester, and I think we'll hit the ground running. Oh, there's Winter Fest at the end of the month, that everybody's really excited about, because the theme is Hogwarts. Which, I mean, how can you not get excited about Harry Potter?
My god, I hear the theme song now.
Oh, that's it? I think that's it. Oh, okay.
Thank you so much. Where are we? Are there any comments from the public on agenda items? Yes, please introduce yourself.
William Gross, from 7C View Avenue, Cape Elizabeth. I have one question on the agenda item, you have a schedule for the adoption of the fiscal year 2016 budget. And on that schedule, I notice it says that at the April meeting of the town council, public comments are allowed. My question is, during the school board workshops and finance committee meetings in February and March that are shown on the schedule, are comments from the public, will they be allowed up to and including questions on individual line items in the budget? Or is that something the school board doesn't normally allow in workshops and finance committee meetings?
Michael, as finance chair, would you be here to answer that question?
Sure. As you know, all meetings are public, and we always welcome community input, so you definitely are free to ask questions. We would ask, the more information we have in advance, the better prepared we can be, so if you have too much specific detail, we may not be prepared, but I'd be happy to meet with you, or in any form, to address any of your concerns. But all our meetings are open to the public, and we definitely welcome citizen input.
Thank you, Bill, that's an excellent question. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Communications. I believe we have some fun things coming up.
We do, and we're going to start by recognizing the girls' volleyball team, so I'm going to introduce Coach Sarah Beckel, and let her introduce her players and colleague.
Thank you so much.
You have to go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Got to be official. Got to be official.
Okay, I didn't know I was going to have to announce anybody. I'll start with Katie Conley, Jr., Lydia Brenneman, you guys can stand up, yeah?
Oh, yes, please.
Yes, please.
Annie Ball, Phoebe Coburn, Pua, Maggie Dadman, and Monica Delacuilla.
Yeah, if you turn around, the audience can see.
And my assistant coach, Hillary Roberts. These girls did an amazing thing this season, so. Yes, that's it. Thank you very much.
Beckel, I have to say, I've attended some of your games, they have got to be the most rousing, crowd-pleasing games I think I've ever seen. You guys had some real white-knuckle. Can you tell us just a little bit about those last few games, because they were amazing?
Amazing, yeah.
Nothing short of.
I mean, I was saying to somebody today, that just today, I was at Local Buzz, and somebody came up and congratulated me, I was like, what are we talking about? It was from November 1st, which is, I mean, we're in January, and people are still talking about it.
Yes.
You know, volleyball's sort of a new sport in Maine, and it's been growing in Cape for years, and what these girls did, that playoff run, is unbelievable. In any sporting event, to be down and up against the wall, to the number-one seed, the four seed, and the three seed? Two seed. And to win is just unbelievable. They are some of the toughest, hard-working girls ever.
You guys never gave up, which was just so amazing. So for those of us who don't understand volleyball very much, it was fun to watch, but how does that work? So the tournament was, how many games?
Well, it's single elimination, you know, they do a prelim, but we were seeded high enough, so we didn't have to play in the prelim, and then, so it was quarterfinals. And it was tough, because we had a fifth seed, so we didn't even have a home match, so we had to travel to everybody's home court, and to beat them. Against Greeley, the number-one seed, down two-love, two-match points, and we won. It's amazing.
Pretty cool.
Yeah.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you. Come back next season, it's real exciting.
I just wanted to say, before you go, I've sat through a lot of volleyball games, they're one of the most exciting spectator sports going. And frankly, at the finals, which I was really happy I made, because you guys were incredible, I just wanted to compliment you for, during that snafu at the scoring table, when it was like ten minutes of uninterrupted, of interrupted play, you were up a little and had momentum. It was just unbelievable, I've never seen anything like it. And to hold your poise, you ended up losing that one, but you came back, and I was just unbelievably proud of you, so congratulations for really prevailing over a really difficult situation. Congratulations.
Anyone else want to sing their praises? Thank you so much for representing our school so excellently.
And our second recognition is intended to be our mock-trial team, and I don't see Coach Paige.
Ms. Page will be here at 7:15.
She'll be here at 7:15. We're just a few minutes away.
Okay. We could whistle, or we could move on to our next item?
We could. We could move on to our next item.
Let's do that. Okay. Up next on our agenda, while we wait for Ms. Page to join us, is the 2015-2016 school year calendar second draft.
So, in your packet is a revision to the calendar, as discussed at the last meeting, it includes a proposal for five early release days for Poncove only, they're shown in purple on your calendar. As we discussed at our last meeting, Poncove teachers have less collaborative spending time than their colleagues in other buildings, and so this is an attempt to provide them with some more time to address the many initiatives that we are working on as a district, and that are required under state law.
Do I have any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I think when we discussed this back in December, we were going to hope that we would receive comments from teachers or parents, and did we solicit or receive any?
So the draft is just being shared tonight.
Oh, okay.
So we're not voting tonight on this item, the intent really is that we're sharing this information tonight, so that there's an opportunity for some of that feedback from faculty, as well as from the community, in order to inform your decision at the February meeting.
So, to just sort of expand on that, the first draft was presented at our October school board meeting. The draft had been submitted after our district had been working collaboratively with our PATHS consortium. The Department of Education, and please correct me if I get this wrong, but the Department of Education had sort of leaned on the consortium to come up with no more than five dissimilar days between all of the sending school districts, so that we have common instruction time, in which we could then send our students to PATHS, too. And so because of that requirement, we'd actually been able to come up with a draft plan and presented it early on in our school board year. It was during that October meeting that we had asked for feedback from both the administrators and teachers and families, since we'd put it out at a public hearing. From my understanding, and I apologize I wasn't here that evening, on the evening of December 9th, we were given some feedback from the Poncove school, and, correct me again, Kelly, if I've got this wrong, where there was a need to have some professional development days, or professional planning days, pardon me, for the school. Could you tell us a bit about those needs, please, yes? I think it would help for folks to understand.
Good evening, I'm a little drier than I was at last month's meeting, when I was asked to speak on this. We had had a meeting, a staff meeting, the day before, and discussion ensued around the need for more planning time, and so, at that point, we, and Meredith had obviously informed us that, you know, there had been plenty of, there had been time for input, but she kindly brought it to the table the next night at the board meeting, and asked if it could be tabled, and if consideration could be given. And the reason that we're asking for it, is Meredith had expressed at last month's meeting, we, the elementary school, has the least amount of planning time compared to the middle school and the high school, and even though on paper, even on paper, it's 45 minutes of common planning time a day, but unlike the middle school and high school, teachers have to escort children to and from, so that was 45 minutes, actually amounts to about 35 minutes, when you think of, especially depending on if you're escorting kindergarten in first and second grade, down to the other end of, we call it the north end of Poncove, and for some, it's like a field trip. But it really would give us extended time, sustained time, like we had in those November days, even though it would be half-days, to really roll up your sleeves, really delve into particular topics, and it can look anywhere from teams working together, to K4 working together, on common initiatives that we really need extended time to work on. And we have faculty meetings, but that's really, you know, an hour, 70 minutes max, and it really doesn't give us enough time, and it can be fragmented, too, so it goes from one week to another. And even though they have team time to work on these, again, it goes back to, really amounts to about 35 minutes. We used to have some time, teachers used to have some time at lunchtime, that gets broken up, obviously, because of duties, and we just thought that this would really give us time to be able to have that sustained professional development time. We had it years ago, many, most school districts have it, currently have it, in various scenarios, but we'd really, I'd really advocate that, if you would, we'd really ask that you kindly consider, you know, approving these days. And we will, Meredith had told us, we have, I believe it's until January 30th, we will give you a document that gives you detailed information about how we would use those days, on very, I mean, not necessarily schedule, but all the various uses of those days, and how they would be focused on, really, student learning, the impact they would have on students who would ultimately be the beneficiaries.
Terrific. Are there any questions for Kelly?
We were, we were trying to ask about coverage for families, and whether that was possible? Is that, is there any update on that?
Yes, I had a conversation with Russell Packet, the Community Services Director, and actually, just yesterday, we had a nice conversation, and he was more than accommodating. I said if we were looking at a noon dismissal, say, once a month, because he saw the updated calendar, he said we would be more than willing and more than able to accommodate that, and plan various experiences that families could sign up for, well in advance, and.
So would those be experiences for FE?
We didn't get into the details about that. I.
Currently are.
They usually are.
Yeah, they usually are. And I know that that's what surrounding districts often offer as well.
True. Absolutely. I remember the days, thinking back from when my children were in Poncove, which seems like yesterday, that when there were half-days, there were also the ability, since it used to be a district-wide half-day, that we could then hire high school babysitters.
I do remember that, I go back that far. I do remember that. And we, Russell and I didn't discuss that, I mean, which would be separate, but.
Do you know if the families at Poncove, have you gotten any feedback from them?
No, we haven't, we haven't put anything out to them yet.
Okay.
So we would solicit feedback from them as well.
And, if I may just ask, I think last month, Kelly, we also threw out the idea of possibly a late start as an option, or, you know, breaking, doing it somehow differently, since the remainder grades will be in school. I don't know how to, you know, if that's part of your polling with parents and teachers, but I think we did.
We did discuss that, I remember, at last meeting, and I, we had done, we had different scenarios at Poncove over the years, and we found the late starts were not as successful as the early release days, in terms of getting the work done, and if I, and I can't say this with data in front of me, but I believe that families preferred having the late, the early release days versus the late start, because then, it was easier for them to arrange whatever, whether it was childcare or activities, for early release versus late start. But I don't have, I don't have that data. But I do, we did discuss that a little bit at the last meeting.
Okay. Kelly, I'm always concerned about that, there are a population of kids that do well in school, and there's a population of kids who need extra attention in school. Do you have a percentage of what our cohort for reading recovery, for the math lab, for children who see BRI, or have transitional issues? How many of those children, how we can, on a half-day, still provide the extra curriculum?
Really good question. We would definitely not stray from, obviously, IEP goals, we would not stray from anything. Students would still receive those services, they wouldn't be receiving them, obviously, on those, during that half-day time, and we're looking at, right now, the calendar, it's approximately, it's once a month, so they would still get those services, whether they, if it's, if, say, and right now, on the calendar, they're on Mondays, Monday half-days, so we would make sure that those students still receive the services that they are entitled to receive by IEP compliance, or whether it was in their individual learning plan. So we would make sure that that, it wouldn't lose.
I know that schedules, you'd be planning your schedule, and, you know, so for Mondays, not to have reading recovery on Mondays, because those children would then not have it one time a month, and their routine would be upset. Is that something that you can also plan into the schedule?
Oh, yeah. And we do that, and one consideration, too, because we, when holidays often fall on a Monday, so we often have to plan around that, too, so when a student, when we have Monday holidays, like we're going to be having next Monday, we have to plan. So, and the same thing with allied arts, so if students who would, right now, are on a six-day rotation, but say we went back to a five-day rotation, say, we would make sure that no one missed out on something, so, we want to make sure that everything's equitable, and that students receive the services they need, and no one is missing out on, say, say gym every, once a month on Monday. But these are all really good questions, and all that we will address as we provide you with a document.
And I would assume that we'd need a time for parents to give feedback, we already covered that, before we vote on it, because the past plan makes sense to me, because we're doing a K-12 in the district, it makes sense to me to have, I understand, how Poncove needs more time, I'd love a scenario A, B, and C, if you could start at 7:30, and have, you know, I'm nervous about half-days for students, and for student coverage. I like the fact that we have 90 minutes of reading in school on, you know, a daily basis. I love what we've, you know, I've been on the board for five years now, we've built these initiatives in, that seems second nature, and so, taking time away out of the classroom worries me. I know that you can do it, and that if you can just give us a plan, that this is what we would like, we're willing to compromise, this is our second plan to be created, this is the way this district does it, you know, to give some scenarios, so that, because a full, if we're voting, it's a full year of voting.
Some comparisons. And I think the way to look at it, too, is we're really lifting professional development, so we're enhancing what, we're enhancing teachers' practice, so, and this gives us that time to have really quality instruction, you know, for, right now, we're, we are doing a lot now, we also are having a lot of substitute coverage, so that we can send teachers to do things, and I think, you know, we would still do some of that, but this might alleviate some of that as well. So we see it as a, we see it as a good way to still be able to lift practices, and enhance what children are learning, in a way that keeps it systematic, but at the same time, and it is a fine line, but we want to make sure that what we're doing is really impacting students the most, and we would not, we would not be robbing Peter to pay Paul, if that makes sense.
Are there any other comments, questions, concerns?
Just a little one, Kelly, and that would, I appreciate your interest in hopefully getting a little bit of time each month, but October feels heavy to me, and with a full teacher day on the 9th, I'm thinking perhaps you wouldn't need to also add an early release after the conference weekend, because that made October pretty choppy, so either to cut it back to four, or move it over to May, when it's quieter, would be one suggestion.
We did look at, we had a team leaders' meeting yesterday, and we did take a look at the calendar, we did notice that, and we did notice, actually, we were noticing, possibly, and actually, it wasn't, it was April we were noticing, and that perhaps trading April, or, as you say, October, for May, because there's nothing in May, and May allows us to be thinking forward into next year, and also how we're wrapping up and examining data for the year in May, so there are variations that we could look at, that would make the best sense, in terms of practice, and the information that we need, and what the purpose of those days would be, timewise, through the calendar.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
So, Kelly, I'm a big believer in the collaborative time, I think that's, I think that time is very often very productive. I would just pass on something that I've heard very frequently from teachers over, it's over the years, which is that teachers are looking for input into how they use their professional development time, so if we're expanding teacher professional development time at Poncove by five half-days over the course of the year, I just want to encourage you to seek teacher input into how that time is used.
That's already underway, so we have, we have a lot of that.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is, I know you don't need me to.
And I'm sure they will be thanking you for raising this publicly. Yes, no, they, that's already underway, we had a robust conversation about that at team leaders yesterday, and we've had, we've had, we've had staff meetings with lots of input about how we're going to make sure we don't miss certain topics, but make sure that our focus is really targeted, so that, that would be a huge, that would be essential to map it out strategically.
Great, thanks.
And align it with a strategic plan, and so, there would be a lot involved, and teachers would be right there with us doing that, so it would not be a top-down decision on how we use the days.
I guess, Meredith, I have a question for you, is how would this be for equitable for the middle school and high school? Is this, are we going to have an inequity that we have?
In terms of teacher preparation time?
Yeah, just, you know, we've worked so hard to have K-12 school curriculum alignment, and so, wanting Poncove, you know, wanting all teachers to be, to do the vertical and the.
So if you start at the high school, teachers teach generally one content area, at the middle school, they generally teach two, and at the elementary school, they teach all of them.
Okay.
They teach four. So I think, you know, we had a discussion at our administrative team meeting, and I don't think we feel that same need, not that teachers wouldn't always welcome more time, but as we try to balance the instructional needs, versus, you know, of our children, versus the planning time needs for our staff, we think this is a reasonable compromise, and that it is equitable.
Thank you. And then, just, I want to reiterate the question, only because I think I forgot the answer, and I apologize if I've repeated myself, but is there a plan to receive feedback from the parents and families?
Yes.
In Poncove?
Yes.
And will we be able to read those reports, or?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, at our next meeting.
So, okay.
I just wouldn't want this to be a surprise.
Yeah.
Since we've, over the years, phased those out?
Right.
Fantastic. Any other questions or concerns for Kelly?
Thank you for the up to news, really, really good questions, and we have some staff here who were curious, and wanted to come and, you know, in support, and to hear the dialogue, so, so thank you for, and we will get that information to you for. So, so thank you for, and we will get that information to you for, for your next meeting, but we'll have it to Meredith by, by the end of the month.
And so that we can be clear on process, when we come back next month, we'll have a second draft? Or will that be something that we will be?
If there is a revision to the draft, we will try to get that out sooner. Because if we want feedback on that, it seems only fair to ask people to provide feedback on the intended calendar.
Correct.
And then you'll, the intent is to have the feedback by the end of the month so that we're able to provide it to you in advance of the board meeting in February so that we can vote on, to adopt a calendar in February.
In February. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I see that we have our representative for our mock trial team. Would you care to come forward and sing your?
Unfortunately, this is today, please. It's the fifth year. David, do you want to come on down?
I think you ought to.
Come on.
Really?
As it is the fifth championship win for the team, the fifth, and a fifth in a row, excitement has waned about coming to school board meetings and. But we have Sierra and we have David and we're very proud of the team's accomplishments and the community's support. The kids did an outstanding job this year. Sierra, do you have any comments you'd like to make about how much fun we had?
Obviously mock trial is very, probably one of the biggest commitments club wise in the school, but it's a blast. Every Thursday we come together and we debate a case for four hours. And it's the same case, but each year and each meeting, every, a new argument comes up and a new problem we have to address. So it's a great, I think for me, it was great. It builds your confidence. It builds your public speaking skills. And it's also a privilege to be a part of because you have to try out to get in. And they not only look at your, your poise, they look at your poise, they look at your confidence and they teach you that as well. So you can only get better by joining mock trial.
It's truly authentic learning. David?
Sure. I almost corrected you. It is our fifth year in a row rather than our fourth year, but, and I didn't notice it coincided to when I became the coach too, but actually it's mainly due to Dick O'Meara. The, mock trial is actually a real trial. It's called mock only because it's not, you know, for real. But there are live witnesses. There's a live, real judge. They follow the evidence rules. They do opening and closing statements. They do direct exams, cross exams. Students act as witnesses. They get graded on a point scale for their presentation skills, their, the content and quality of their, all their arguments. They learn the evidence rules. It's a truncated version, but there's a lot of evidence questions. So it's, it's, it's a phenomenal learning experience. But what's best about it is unlike anything else in our school, it's not something that you can do from a cookbook or a textbook, even though I wrote a textbook on it. It's, it's really something that these kids have to learn on their feet. There's a lot of bizarre things that happen during a mock trial. Witnesses say things that make no sense. They don't answer the question the way it's supposed to. People make bizarro objections that literally you, you, you almost fall down trying to figure out how to respond to it. But these kids, nothing works according to the cookbook. So every trial, they have to think on their feet. They have to think critically. And there's no easy little multiple choice answer. And I think that's the great benefit of, of this. These kids, and this year in particular, we had a sort of an all-star team last year. We had mostly seniors who, who won the states and then a lot of them went on to the nationals. So this year, the vast majority of the kids we had were either very new or fairly new. We only had a couple of returning veterans. So we started off, I can honestly say the first few practices were really rough. I mean, literally they did not know a thing. And it was scary. But they went from being poor, being superb. And it was through enormous hard work and a lot of critical input from the coaches and from the captains. They all handled it well. They all learnt. And we made it to the nationals, which can be in North Carolina again. And we have a very young team and.
It's because of prom, most of the seniors won't go to the national competition because they want to attend prom the same week.
But also that we, we kind of like to have the younger ones go because it's practice for the following year. They get to, they get to move up a role. They get to go from a witness to a lawyer or from a direct exam to doing a cross exam, which is a little bit harder. There may be a closing argument. But it's, it's a lot of fun to teach them. They're, they're, they're great kids. They work hard. And I can tell you, it's, they go from looking like deer in the headlights because it's not something you can look up in a textbook. It's not something that comes naturally to them. They actually have to think. And by then, by the, by the end of the year, these kids were great. They were getting hit with things that they never expected after four months of doing it and they, they handle it. And that's really what counts. Thanks.
Thank you. We look forward to heading to nationals and delivering clink bags to all very soon.
Thank you for representing our school. Thank you so much for representing our school so well. Appreciate your efforts. Well done. Okay. So next up on our agenda is the proposed FY16 budget meeting schedule. We've already had some comments from the board on that schedule. Do you want to go down or?
I can review it quickly and then I don't know if I still have anything to add as finance chair. One of the pieces of feedback that we received last year in a discussion that we had was geez, that overview budget conversation happens at our workshop, which isn't seen by the viewing public at home until sometimes later.
It's recorded.
But it's available on YouTube in our recorded fashion. So we made a decision this year with our new business administrator, who is working hard on, on this process right now to move the initial budget meeting to that first February business meeting. And so then the workshops will begin with our workshop, our normal workshop series in February and continue through March. And a list of intended topics is kind of on this workshop spreadsheet, but that always is subject to change and those agendas are posted in advance.
Anything to add to that, Michael?
Yes, I would just say, as always, we can only answer questions that are submitted. In other words, if you have questions in the community, please, you can even start sending them now so we can prepare, respond and address your concerns. A few things we are, for feedback from last year, you know, like Meredith said, we are doing the initial meeting at a regular school board meeting. And we are looking to simplify some of the programmatic and staffing changes so everyone can see it on a clean sheet of paper. And we are looking to better answer the question for citizens, you know, how much will my taxes go up if I support the budget? So, you know, just let people know we have listened to your feedback and we will incorporate some suggestions we've received in the upcoming presentation. But like I said, please ask questions. You know, it's our obligation to respond to citizens. So we don't know, it's hard to answer questions that we don't receive. So please email those to myself or the superintendent.
Thank you, Michael.
One more thing I would add. Our budget process begins months earlier. We started back this fall. Principals submitted preliminary budgets back before the break. And we are operating always with some unknowns as we do this work. And we learned just last week that the governor's budget proposal includes flat funding for general purpose aid. But we know that the education committee's subcommittee report on the essential programs and services formula makes a lot of recommendations for changes. So we won't really know exactly what our funding will look like for several months yet, at least in that piece. We are hard at work on enrollment decisions and we're waiting, I'll speak to, I can speak to this a little bit later, but we're awaiting information on enrollment from planning decisions. We know that our incoming class, based on conversations with them, is likely to be smaller than our current kindergarten class. And that our classes moving up from elementary, our classes moving up from the elementary school are smaller than the classes leaving the middle school. And our, for, I think we've got another year where our class at the high school graduating is about the same size. And after that, we begin to see reductions at about 20 students a year. We're going from numbers hovering around 150 down to numbers in the 130s. And as you know, our current K-12 numbers are around 100. So, you know, that obviously becomes a conversation as we move through the budget process. So our staff submits budget proposals to our administrators. Our administrators then bring forward those proposals to us in December. Scott, our business administrator, works closely to sort of plug all those pieces in. We plug in what we know for information to include things like general purpose aid and health insurance and teacher salary increases, those large pieces of our budget, fuel costs, all of those pieces. And then.
Taking the mystery out of it.
I'm sorry. Well, I, I hope so. And, and then it's ultimately my job to bring a budget to you where I recommend, here's what we think is in the best interests of our district pre-K-12. And so that's the budget that will come to you at the February business meeting. And we'll talk some more at our January workshop about where we see some of those drivers at this point. And we look forward to the conversations in the months ahead.
Well, I appreciate all the pre-work that goes into the budget before it gets presented to the board. Doesn't sound easy. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns on the proposed school board budget schedule? Okay, seeing none. The next item on our agenda are retirements.
So I've received two letters of retirement in the past couple of weeks, both of some longtime staff here in Cape Elizabeth. The first is from Jamie Micho, who's been a teacher at the middle school for 21 years, an English language arts and social studies teacher at present. And we wish her well. And as the board knows and the public may or may not know, we recognize our retirees at the end of the school year. So there will be time to speak to them and of their accomplishments and work in the district. The second letter is from our longtime volunteer coordinator, Gail Schmader, who is retiring after 26 years in the district. So those are both large shoes to fill and we wish them both well in their transition.
Gosh, how many of us here has Gail trained as volunteer in our district? I'm not sure there are many parents that Gail has not touched. She will be missed. Changes. Thank you. And now for the fun item on our communications agenda, the superintendent's report.
Oh, no. Yay, the library instructional technology specialist.
Brought to you by Cape Elizabeth.
So for those of you who need to be reminded of who these folks are, we have with us Carolyn Young from the high school, Jonathan Warner, who works both in the high school and the middle school, and Amanda Kozaka, who works at the middle school.
This will be the comic routine for the night.
Isn't that always the first question an IT person asks? Is it plugged in?
Is it plugged in? Have you turned it off?
Turned it on.
So as we kind of get organized a little bit, I'm going to be handing out a slip of paper that has information about our website, our digital library, so that if you would like to go ahead and see what we've been doing, you can do that. It has a big QR code on it. But if you don't have a QR code scanner, you can also type in the web address.
Okay, thank you. All right. My name is Amanda Kozaka. I am the middle school library and instructional technology specialist. I'm much better at saying that this year than I was last year around this time when we first came to speak to you. Again, I'm with Jonathan Warner and Carolyn Young. As I said, we were here about a year ago, I think it was a little, little more than a year ago, to speak to the board and any audience members about this exciting new position, the LIT's role in our schools. And we were very excited certainly about the change moving forward with our library positions. And we had a lot of excitement about our vision and our goals and what, what was possible ahead of us. And not to say that any of that's gone, but now we can come to you after about a year and say with confidence, really what we've seen changing in our schools and our school libraries, our learning commons, excuse me. We want to share some of those successes with you, kind of celebrate some of the things we've done over the past year and then let you know a little bit about what we're doing moving forward. To start with, I do want to point out that last year, we relied on one way of showing our value in a traditional sense. We showed you some of our circulation statistics in the school and we showed you how many times students visit the library. And we talked about the love of, of reading and how we can support literacy and how we're joining that, all those traditional library skills with the, with our technology strand. But I was at a Southern Maine Library District meeting, board meeting on Friday, where I was fortunate to hear the director of the Portland Public Library talking about this very concept. How do we value libraries? How do we show our worth to our constituents and our communities and our patrons? And I, I can't get the exact quote right, but he said something to the effect of traditionally, we've been valued by two major concepts, that we have books and that we make transactions. And we still do those things and they're fundamental parts of libraries, but it's no longer how we can show our true value. And it's certainly an issue at Portland Public Library where their wifi rates are just off the charts, but our circulations are about the same. We have some statistics to share with you, but we'd also like to talk about how the position's really changing and how our value is, can be demonstrated through a lot more than, than those facts and figures. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn over the microphone to Mr. Warner, who can talk about some of the professional development that we have done to really expand our goals and understandings as LIT's professional.
Hello. So last time we were here, we offered the Gone with the Wind version of this and we were here for about two and a half hours. And so we're going to be very brief and give you one of each of these and then send you to digital resources to look at the rest of them. So for example, and as you know me, this is very difficult. So watch me do this in 60 seconds. We went as a team to the iPad Summit in Boston. Over the course of the year since last I saw you, Amanda and I had gone and really benefited enormously from seeing so many terrific utilizations of the iPad. About 1,000 people attend at the Heinz Convention Center in Boston. And this year, Amanda and I, Carolyn and Tom Sherrill-Trey, our colleague at the, at Poncove, all went together. So now doubling our experiences there, bringing back twice as many sort of interactions with other people that have had successful iPad programs, talking about all the different ways in which it can be used, K-12. Really a remarkable opportunity to coordinate and network. And as a similar example, when I attended a year ago, I was going sort of as an attendee. After that, I had the opportunity to speak at their conference in Chicago, the people that run the iPad Summit. And then at this year's summit, I presented as well. So over the course of the year since we last saw you, we've each had a chance to sort of speak in a public capacity about the role of the library in learning commons. And I have yet to come up with a non-religious word for this, so I'll say proselytize about the opportunities that a learning commons provides, the ways in which we can rethink literacy, rethink tech integration. And so now in that role as a presenter there, I got to talk to 120 people about what it's like to be a Cape. So I think that growth for us has been fantastic. And both Carolyn and Amanda have had similar opportunities in other places. But those relationships and those interactions, you can get some sense of through the website. We'll also show you in a minute our Twitter accounts that have given us a public, a social media presence. But as we begin to develop the story of the, the learning commons, it's been really exciting to get all the national and now international feedback about how our work is mirroring work elsewhere in the country and how it really is dovetailing with rethinking the role of the library, as Amanda said. So now I turn it over to Carolyn. I'll talk a little bit about, we're being unintentionally political, the professional development day that we offered back in November, not knowing that was going to be an agenda item earlier this evening, and how some of the work we did outside reflected in our work here at home.
So as Jonathan said, back in November, we were able to offer some professional development to the district wide for different teachers based on what we've learned at the iPad Summit and various places where we've kind of done. Summit and various places where we've kind of done professional development. We were able to kind of form a mini-conference on one of those days, and each of us, we developed different sessions that we were going to teach based on different areas that we thought would help teachers out or teachers would enjoy. And we kind of taught mini-sessions on that, and teachers were given hour and a half blocks where we kind of provided direct instruction for 45 minutes, and then they were given 45 minutes to kind of explore the different tools that we talked about. And they all came prepared with something to use those tools for, and Jonathan is pulling up. These are some of the responses that we got from teachers. And as you can see, well, sort of see on the Flurry projector, 90% or so of people said they were either very useful or useful sessions. So we were able to kind of pull the professional development things that we learned and bring them in. You can sort of see what the, some of the different sessions were. This was just the first session that we offered, and there, in the second session that we offered of the day, there are different ones. So we offered things about smart boards in your classroom, Appy Hour, which is kind of teachers and other educators sharing apps that were successful for them and how they use them, book reports 2.0, so how to kind of bring the book report into the modern world, flipping the classroom, which was one I taught that I thought went very well, it's kind of how to do instructional videos in the classroom as homework for students, and then use that time in the classroom to actually get hands-on and solve those problems with the teacher right there to ask the questions to, and a number of other things. And that went very well. A lot of the teachers who gave us feedback said that they really enjoyed the time to actually play with the different tools that we showed them. So the professional development that we are seeing across New England, as Jonathan said, we went to Boston, we are bringing back and hopefully using in a positive way in our schools.
Thank you. So back now to the middle school library and learning commons, and we're going to switch over, I think, to some photos. You may have heard that we had a bit of a renovation in our library, very generously funded by the Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation. We had this grant sort of in the works, we've been thinking about it for a long, long time, but we were awarded this tremendous grant around this time last year and spent the summer, the remainder of last school year redesigning our library space through giraffes and drawings and concept maps. And then over the summer, had the library, the library space in the middle school completely emptied. We packed every book. We packed every item from our desks. Everything was gone. And we really, it was a great sort of symbolic and, you know, actual wiping the slate clean and rebuilding. We didn't change the footprint of the space at all. Instead, we, I think we're a pretty creative, innovative bunch, and we got a lot of input from students and staff and determined the priorities for what the space needed to provide. So instead of the library being fundamentally a place where we store books, it is fundamentally a place where students go to learn, which happens to include at times finding books. Our library and learning commons was unveiled, the new space was unveiled in the fall. There's some great press about it, so I won't talk too much about it now. But the space we have available now that we use every day is very active, very vibrant. It's not a, it's not a quiet space, and that for some is still a challenge, sort of wrapping your head around what the change in the space means for a change in our behavior expectations. It's not a silent place, but it's a very active learning space, and that is what we know the students and the teachers need. We hold our staff meetings now in the library and learning commons. We have a lot of group work happening at all times. We have students filming videos, and we have classes Skyping with authors and other teachers. It's really an amazing transition. And again, it speaks to this change in the field of library work. Our role is no longer someone who delivers a book or, you know, inspires a lover of reading. Those are still fundamentally very important parts of our job, but instead we're, we've created a space where students can, as we've heard other educators come up here today and say, authentically learn through authentic experiences. Our, as, when we rebuilt the space, we also not only redesigned the layout of the furniture and changed the kind of furniture we use, everything's mobile, everything's changeable, we rearranged the collection by genre. It's a term that's kind of being bounced around to genrefy a collection. And though it's easy to say, oh, it's a bookstore model, it's what kids are familiar with, it's easier to use, it really is a reflection of the proficiency-based learning that we're, or assessments and the diplomas really that we're working towards. We are teachers, and we know a lot about the Common Core, we know a lot about the changes that need to happen in the coming years. It's a really big transition, and we see examples of how that can happen in this environment. If you think of the old library that you walked into, it was a quiet space, it might have been intimidating to walk into, and faced with tall, towering, packed shelves of books, students who wanted to independently search for a book had to first rely on what they've memorized about libraries. And we know that our students don't learn authentically by memorizing things. So did it make sense for a student to walk in and say, well, the Dewey number for sports is 796, so now I need to? That's not a process that's important. Instead, what we want students to do in all of our classrooms, and we want to reflect that in the library, is think critically. We want a student to walk into a space that they feel comfortable entering. It's not too quiet, it's not too loud, it's just right. They have plenty of informed staff to help them, or they can work independently. But when they, when they're looking for a book for independent reading, or they're looking for a source of information, the way the library and learning commons is designed is, helps them through a critical thinking process instead. You walk in and you see the sign, signs around the room, and you can independently start to focus, well, I know I want a fantasy book, I'm going there. And you have a more focused area to work with. And then you can think about the critical thinking steps, like this book caught my eye because the cover looks great, I'll read the back, you know, all the strategies, the reading strategies about choosing a book. But not to belabor the point, but simply rearranging how the collection is on the shelves has really changed the way the library is used. I think my favorite change is, however, the attitude. I can happily say that I have on many occasions overheard kids say, LLC is so cool now. And that's a big shift. If students want to come into the space, it's a big deal. So we're happy, we're really, really happy with this change, and we're very optimistic about how it's going to continue to help kids learn some critical thinking skills and work, and how to work through some independent problem-solving and group problem-solving models. So I've said, I think, too much about that. We're going to move back to Carolyn, who's going to talk about the virtual part of our learning commons, which is our really great website. As we said, is listed, the URL is listed on that bookmark, as well as a QR code to get to it.
So on the wall behind you, this is our website, and this is what we use every day. I know I use it every day to help students kind of find different information. And as I kind of talk about it, I'm going to post this infographic that I put together about the library and how it was used, how it was used in the 2014 to 15 year. It's smaller than I thought it would be, but this is cycling through of different things of how the library was used and how students use the library website and the physical library. And if you take a look at it, you can see that the digital library is on the rise, even though the physical library space is staying pretty consistent. The library website itself had 36,000 visits, and we just created it in the 2014 year. So 36,000 different folks came to the library multiple times. So that was really exciting for me to kind of see the number of people that are using the library. In response to that large influx of people using the digital learning space, we are, both the middle school and the high school are sharing funds to put together something called Overdrive. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with that platform through the public library, but it is the largest ebook and audiobook platform for people who are using it, and it's really, really friendly with the iPads. And I'm really excited about putting that out there for fiction and kind of pleasure reading, reading on the iPads for one-to-one for students. So that is in the very, very near future. I'm hopefully almost done talking to the sales rep about putting that together. That's been several months of back-and-forths between she and I, so that is pretty close to being all set. As Amanda said, usage statistics are not necessarily exciting, but they do kind of tell you what's happening in the library world. The most popular database that we access, that we have on the library website is something called Jstore, which is short for journal storage. It's used a lot in the academic library research. That was visited 2,000 times by people clicking directly outside of our library website in 2014. The second most-used source digitally was the Gail Virtual Reference Library, which are ebooks we have just for research, and that was visited 900 times in 2014. A database that I just recently purchased for the high school, which is called U.S. History in Context, and there is also a World History partner with that called World History in Context. And both of those were, I bought those last year in May after a trial by the social studies department, and those were each visited 600 times in that less-than-12-month span. So it's a very exciting time for us. The library digital presence is on the rise, so even though students might not think that they're using the actual library space as much, they are certainly using the digital presence of it a lot more than they were in the past. But as I have on this infographic, it just cycled through, but we did circulate 300 more books this year than we did last year, physical books. So we are on the rise there as well.
So I'm going to make two quick comments about one of each of those things they said. In this series of photographs, this is my favorite, where they're standing in front of the STEM collection. And these boys, thank you. So when you look at a genrefied shelf like this one, you're looking at nonfiction here about maybe airplanes and the Army and engineering. And here, you're looking at the 921s, the biographies about figures who are preeminent in STEM. And these four boys stood here for about 25 minutes, going up and down the shelves and each handing one another books. And I kept going over and taking photographs and taking photographs, and I can only show you this one, but there's one actually where a boy is jumping up. He's like, check this out! And it was as if I had staged him, but I didn't. And it made me incredibly happy. So to see the way genrefication has worked in the middle school for students has been extraordinary. And as a corollary to that, I would like to publicly recognize everyone who is dealing with Thomas Memorial Library right now. Kudos to them, because Amanda and I have never been in better shape, and we were at the end of the summer, and we had one tiny collection by comparison. Also, I think Amanda and I have had a lot of more public face as a result of the renovation. And I want to highlight the work Carolyn has done on this website, which I'm now lost, somewhere in my tabs. She has done an extraordinary amount of work to bring the resources that our students need, both to the middle school and the high school. And I hope that you'll take the opportunity to take a look at some of the resources that are available there. There's some information specifically about learning commons models, but she will work individually with teachers and put together posts and webpages that allow them to really quickly access information. And in the way that genrefication has aided our middle school students, Carolyn's work to create digital spaces for the high school students has been equally, I think electrifying in terms of the ways in which students are engaging with the collection that we have and what we have available for resources. So I was going to talk briefly about the E-Team. The, at the, near the end of last year, Jeff asked me whether I would be willing to teach a class, and I jumped at the opportunity. And what we came up with was something called Leaders in Technology and Information Literacy. So I teach an elective now at the high school, first period each day. And this semester, I have 12 students, and currently, this coming semester, I have 10. We meet for class in the library, but then we go out and work with teachers and other students. And this is the Twitter page for the E-Team, but it gives you a sense of some of the things that have been happening. For example, me in this extraordinarily ugly sweater, very important moment, there we go. Really a critical moment in Cape Elizabeth history. But this, where we worked with students at Pon Cove and with Mr. Cheryl Trey, and the students on the E-Team had the opportunity to collaborate with him and with those students to put together Coder Express in December. And at the end of this month, also collaborating with Tom to create Google Apps for Families. So third and fourth grade families will come to Pon Cove for the evening and learn from their own children how to use Google Apps for Education. And in the background, the students on the team are helping those third and fourth graders learn how to screencast and how to create tutorial videos. So they've been doing that for, the students at the high school have been doing that for several months now, and now they're teaching the elementary school students how to do that. And it is incredible to watch those collaborations and how that goes. If you look at the website for the E-Team, you can also get a sense of some of the work that we did as a part of the professional development that we were discussing earlier. So the students on the team created a webpage for each of those sessions that you saw listed, and then in many cases, were available during the sessions to teach teachers what was being taught as a technological skill. So here under Teacher Resources, each of the individual sessions had a page created by one of the students on the team, and then each of those had resources that were available to the teacher. So I, in the screencasting session, would have gone to this page, and then all of these resources were pulled together by the students on the E-Team. So that opportunity, again, going back to this theme of authentic learning, the collaborations that have taken place, teachers teaching, students teaching teachers how to use technology, assisting teachers, assisting their own families, that dynamic is just priceless. It is so extraordinary to watch. And in both spaces, as well as at Pon Cove, I think we've seen an opportunity to develop a K-12 sensibility about our work that we really are enjoying enormously and look forward to continuing to think about ways that our work becomes a K-12 experience for the district and that it is understood to be your library and learning commons, from your first day at Cape to your last, having a sort of continuity to it. And I think the E-Team has given us a great opportunity to begin to explore that. In the coming months, we hope to start one as a club at the middle school, and there's already a self-created Tech with Tutus fourth-grade group that is hilarious, and they're the ones, if you check it, go back to this page, who created the Coder Express video to the tune of Let It Go from Frozen. It's Let Us Code, I think is what it's called. It's pretty fantastic.
Okay. So some next steps. Couple, last couple minutes to talk about what we're, what's coming down the road for us. As I mentioned earlier, being involved with the Southern Maine Library District Board and the Maine Association of School Libraries Board, it's kind of a big deal that we have a learning commons. It's not unheard of in Maine. There are a lot of school libraries now that are redesigning their space and redefining themselves as learning commons. We're not the trendsetters, but we're certainly sort of ahead of the game a little bit. And our success with our learning commons, especially because it's a learning commons that was built within an existing space versus in some of our nearby districts where the learning commons was built as part of a brand-new building. Thank you. It's, we are really looking at opportunities to celebrate this space and use it to help inform other librarians and other technology integrators throughout the state, other teachers as well, on how to provide such opportunities in such a space. So with that in mind, we have offered to host this year's Maslow Spring Fling, which will be held on April 11th. Maslow has a, has two statewide conferences every year, a fall joint conference with the Maine Library Association, and then our Spring Fling. after spending so much time creating this really great slideshow that, boy, I sure spent a lot of time talking, and they really needed more time to dig in. Thinking about revamping the conference model and thinking about using our library commons space, we have a really exciting conference planned with four different strands of learning, including teaching innovation, technology integration, professional development, and professional learning networks for library staff, and our literacy strand, because at the same time that the Spring Fling will be held at the middle school library and Learning Commons, we'll be having our Author Fest at the high school. We think that that timing is just an amazing opportunity to get librarians and teachers from around the state who are interested in attending Spring Fling to also stop in at our Author Fest. It's a really unique opportunity. We are very fortunate that for the Spring Fling, for our teaching innovation strand, we will have Dr. David Lorcher presenting. David Lorcher is pretty much considered the pioneer in the Learning Commons movement. He's written a number of books. He's a library science professor out West, and he is so impressed with what's happening in Maine with the Learning Commons movement that he has offered to come and present at this session. So it's a great chance for us to not only show off our Learning Commons to him, but have him use it to demonstrate what's possible in our spaces and with our, the resources that we are lucky to have here in the state. And you'll see a number of resources.
He's the one who developed the idea of the Learning Commons nationally. So his article is linked there, Flip This Library, in the library website, and the idea that he would come and speak in his space.
That's amazing. So those are some really exciting calendar events for us in regards to our professional library work. Some other?
You already did a good job. So I'll finish by saying that I think another great example has been the opportunity to host the Innovation Team in the Library and Learning Commons. Meredith has visioned for thinking about all the different ways in which we can grow as a district. Having a physical locus in the Library and Learning Commons at the middle school has been wonderful. And we're also developing the physical maker space there and really expanding on the sense, the definition of literacy, the definitions of learning as exploration. And so the opportunity to really begin to, or circle back to what I said at the beginning, to begin to be a beacon or a lighthouse district for the growth of Learning Commons model and the rethinking of the position and the work that we do. I'm now, short version, the program I was in for Library and Learning Science is no longer. And so now I'm in the one at Plymouth State, which is where Library Instructional Technology Specialist began. And as I've begun to take these classes, it's hilarious, because people are like, "Wait, you're doing it. You're this thing that we're trying to invent." "Hi, how are you?" It's great. So it's really a lovely opportunity to go back to where some of these have begun, to have David coming and speaking. I really feel like we're at this wonderful watershed moment of becoming a place where people are looking to better understand the future of libraries, and that is an extraordinary opportunity for us. So we want to finish by taking any questions you have or explaining any other resources that we have shown. And as Carolyn said at the beginning, the bookmarks that you have have a QR code, but everything you've seen is accessible through the various dropdown menus on the Cape LLC website, if you'd like to review it.
It's always exciting. I always love hearing you guys talk. It's fabulous. I know you've got the teachers and the big vision, but I come back to the parents, and we just go over how you can tell your child is doing something fabulous with their iPad and their screen instead of worrying about what they're doing. So just tell us again. I don't think you can tell it enough to parents, how you just say, "Flip." What's your, what's the?
So we joke about the Two Eyes, sorry, the Two Eyes app and the Two Foot app. So the Two Eyes app is where you go as a person and walk and look at the screen, and then the Two Foot app is where you walk over and do the same thing. But getting parents very comfortable with asking their students to flip the screen up like this, so just in the classroom, we say, "Screen's up," so that we can see what you're doing. You can see that I'm looking at Google Apps here. Another conversation I had with a parent was a wonderful one about using technology that's in many Cape Elizabeth homes. In my own home, we use the Apple TV as a method for displaying what's on the screen. And so this mom was really concerned that her child needed privacy, but also not with the device. So I said, "Send the child wherever you want and put the screen that they're using on the Apple TV." And I think just developing anything that gives parents a comfort level with, it is a state's device, it is Cape Elizabeth's device, it is our device, it is not your student's device, and it is a tool for learning. Amanda and I have had the opportunity to speak, sponsored by the Cape Elizabeth Middle, the Cape Elizabeth.
MSPI.
MSPI, thank you, and talk about, with parents directly. But we'd love to have more of those conversations in person, on the phone, online, about specific strategies. But I think they've all boiled down to ways in which, just like, the example I've always given is, if they were reading something and the reaction they were having to what they were reading was concerning, you want to have the same reaction you would have. And somehow, screens to us mean, "Don't bother me," and really just getting past that as a sensibility, so that it is our device. We've also talked a lot about the parking lot and how the terrific resources at Common Sense Media that parents can access, ways to think about what the norms are going to be in your home. And my house really surprises many people, because we have a digital parking lot, and everyone puts their device on it when you come in the door. And I think people think I have my iPhone strapped to my head at all times, or my iPad, and those kinds of delineations. And then when work time starts, it goes up onto the Apple TV, and it becomes a public or, you know, a family experience. So those conversations have been terrific ones to have, and I know you've attended some of those. But we welcome any opportunities to have those at both schools and ways to think about a family dynamic with, that encourages conversation about, about digital citizenship and about how you interact with the device.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say, it's amazing, you know, how enthusiastic you are and how, in my household, you've made, you know, not that libraries weren't ever cool, but there's a high, you know, cool factor. And I know Mr. Charles Trey is not here, but he's very popular in, you know, the younger grades. But I would like to say, you know, I remember being at the school board meeting when it was very controversial that the district was going to do something different. Libraries were, you know, we were in the box, and I think the fear was, we couldn't imagine, you know, how something might look differently. And, you know, we did a lot of feedback on, you know, we can't change the library, it's not broken, you know, we can't see how it's going to improve, so why, why take a risk? But I think this is an amazing example of how not being incrementalist and not just making small changes, but dreaming big and making big changes has impacted so many people. I know the E-Team at Coder Express was one of the most amazing things, where you have, you know, young students seeing sixth, seventh, eighth graders, interested in them, you know, the older guy who you're afraid to talk to, he's so happy to show you, you know, how to do something. And it was such a fantastic experience. And I think it's something, you know, thank you for dreaming big and, you know, believing in yourselves maybe more than, you know, you know, you thought. But I think you did a fantastic job, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. I would like to say that it is because we have, the three of us have always felt like, because of the way this position unfolded, it came with it, this permission to be drastic and take risks. And it is very scary. It's a discussion that we had at our Innovation Team meetings and a lot of other staff meetings. You know, we all have these ideas, these big ideas and these goals, but sometimes when you look at the steps that you'll have to take to get there, it can be really overwhelming, and there can be so many challenges that come up that make it seem like it's easier to just work with what you have than really shake things up. It certainly wasn't easy, but if you keep the right goal, long-term goal in mind, it, we've really been enjoying the hard work that we put into it. And we, as we see our position being more involved in offering professional development in the district, we really recognize that we have opportunities to role-model these things, like this is what, you know, this is what a team effort on such-and-such goal looks like, this is what a community effort around something looks like, this is what, you know, long-term planning entails in all the challenges we had along the way. Don't ask me how late the shelves were arriving to the library. But I will say that it, a lot of it's because of the permissions that we've been given explicitly or otherwise to do these, you know, make these drastic changes for the long-term good of our students' experiences and our staff as well. Any other questions?
I just want to say that congratulations in bringing our district forward. I really applaud the efforts that you guys. I know the last time you presented to us was a presentation on the whirlwind tour that you had taken of other Learning Commons throughout the region. I was really impressed with what you guys were able to integrate and what you found. When I think about re-carrying our pockets, more than what the Apollo 13 had trying to find their way home with a slide ruler, the possibilities that are at our children's fingertips, and you being able to bring that to life for all of us is just completely amazing. And the way that you actually exemplify bringing to life what we really strive to with our strategic plan is to open up those multiple pathways to learning for our students that are exemplary. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is there more to the superintendent's report?
Well, it seems like hardly worth following now, but I'll endeavor on. Thank you, Jonathan, Amanda, and Carolyn. I know it's a late night for you. The Coder Express turnout, as you've already heard, was tremendous. We filled the cafeteria at Pond Cove and headed double-back for more devices and crashed the network. And luckily, our intrepid tech director was there to help us as well, so tech coordinator Noel Haroff. So thank you to everyone involved in that effort. And again, our students showed their parents how to use coding apps that they had learned to use during the Hour of Code initiative at Pond Cove, which is a national initiative, but during the work that was going on here. So it's pretty fun to see first, second, third-grade students teaching their adult parents how to, "No, Mom, you have to put it this way. No, that's a repeat, Mom. You have to, it's going to, it's not going to fit if you do it that way." And they're pretty clear about how this is supposed to work. Let's see. Middle School Spelling Bee is coming up. Amanda is otherwise engaged, but the Spelling Bee is...
It was last week. We have this no-dating schedule first day.
Oh, that's what, okay, that's what was on my calendar. So unnecessary, okay.
Do we have a finalist?
We have, our winner was Remus Morris, a seventh grader. Here is super, very talented speller. And our runner-up was Lila Dron, who was last year's winner, last year's she, who was always a competitor, winning the spelling bee. Both of them are very excited about going to the county office on the 8th of February, and hopefully, that was the last winner as well.
Keep us posted, I'm a junkie.
We will be hosting a substitute teacher training on January 28th from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Middle School Library Learning Commons. Another great use of that space. But we are always looking for substitute teachers, so if you're interested, you can call the district office or sign up online to attend that event and, or call us later. You can still give us a application, but it's an opportunity for folks who may just be thinking about substituting to get some more information about what that might entail. Tomorrow night, I'll be meeting with Russell Packett and Jane Golding with some of our local preschool providers, just to talk about our ideas about moving the preschool program forward that currently exists at Community Services and how we will look at a potential school partnership for that program as the state potentially makes some funding available, further funding available for pre-K. You've already heard again about the Google Apps for Families night coming up on January 29th. We have, coming up in February, an elementary parent, excuse me, not an elementary, but a parent night on differentiated instruction with Dr. Michael Shackelford. Some more information about that will be coming out in my newsletter, hopefully this week. On February 3rd and 4th, the elementary school has concerts for third and fourth graders. Let's see. Steve Wesler, you may remember from our board meeting last spring, talking about climate and culture, is doing a training the end of this week, next week. Next week, with middle school and high school staff and students, that train the trainer piece to really look at school climate and culture, civil rights, how respectful we are to one another. And again, all of that aligns with our district vision and mission and is a CEIF grant hold over.
So have the kids for that training been identified?
It's a work in progress.
Work in progress, okay.
I mentioned earlier that we received just preliminary information about the governor's budget and his plan for general-purpose aid. So again, at this point, the governor's budget proposes level funding for general-purpose aid, but the Essential Programs and Services Committee, as a subcommittee of the Education Committee, has made some recommendations that add some funding in some places and move funding around in other areas. And so that report has yet to be presented to the full Education Committee, and how that will impact the budget overall, we don't know. And so it's, again, very early on in that process. We had, let's see, you heard the date for Cape Celebrates Literacy Week, and Author Fest will be April 11th. Again, that coincides with the Maine Association of School Libraries Spring Fling, which is an exciting opportunity for us. Authors are signing up left and right, so our ranks are building, which is exciting. I shared our information on enrollment updates. There's a January report in your board agenda, but we expect to have a report from Planning Decisions, hopefully for the January workshop.
Can you just describe for those who may not be familiar with who Planning Decisions?
Scott, would you care to speak to that for us? Who Planning Decisions is there, who they are, what they do? Scott Wyman is our business administrator, for those of you who don't know him.
Thank you. I'm unprepared, so I'll be very quick. Planning Decisions is an organization that actually studies population growth, and we've engaged them to actually look at our population and do a five-year forecast. The data begins actually with live births in the area for residents at Cape Elizabeth. So we look at the live births this year, and the implication that they would then start, children would start five years later in Cape Elizabeth, and it's a rotating five-year birth record. And so the indications are, and not all like, unlike the state of Maine, is we're losing our younger student population. We've also asked them to look at the research on the resale of homes as people turn over their homes, and what is the impact of future families coming in with school-aged children, and to see if that impact will be different than just the birth record itself, because there seems to be some changeover in real estate. So as retirees potentially to either leave the community or stay, and there's that whole committee of how to stay and stay at home now, what are the implications for young families moving into Cape Elizabeth? So that data will give us a real good direction. It's interesting the way they do the modeling, and they're fairly accurate when they do that. So, but we are looking at a decreasing population. We should see, I'm guessing, looking at the early data that says, instead of an incoming class of 100, which we might anticipate from previous history in the last few years, is that we're looking at really about 85 students. And that seems, that trend seems to be consistent.
Thanks.
So hopefully, that data will be, it'll be a thorough report, be a full report, on how they actually developed the data and what does it mean for us.
It'll be interesting to see those numbers. Any questions about Planning Decisions?
Of course, they work with the Town Council in Moreno, O'Meara, to get their point of view and with the history, of course.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing.
Continuing.
Smarter Balance Testing Window opens up in March, and so there are a lot of logistical preparations that are taking place for that. In fact, just today, we got an email from the interim technology coordinator at the state to say, "Great news, they're going to have an iOS update that will make iPads compatible with the actual assessment," which is something that has been long-awaited. But as, as this window draws closer, there's growing anxiety, to say the least. So Ruth Ellen Vaughn, our Director of Instruction, and Noel Haroff, our technology coordinator, are working with building principals to try to schedule the timing of those assessments and sort out some of the logistical pieces that need to be in place. When you have students testing school-wide, as we do at the middle school, you have to be really thoughtful about what's the capacity of our network and how can it support all of that. And again, we won't be testing probably all four grade levels simultaneously at any point, but we really need to be just thoughtful about the parameters for the assessment. Enclosed in your board packet was a report from the University of Maine, and that's a report that we have shared. report that we have shared annually for at least the last handful of years, I think. I don't know, two or three, maybe. It just gives us some general information about our students who attend UMaine programs only, so it's not, it doesn't include students, that this particular report doesn't include students who are attending universities out of state. But it does give us a little bit of comparison information as to how our students fare compared to students statewide. You know, one piece of information, for example, is that 68% of our students were still enrolled after a year compared to 78% of students statewide. And so, that's a question for us. You know, are our kids not properly matched? Are they, you know, struggling academically? Are there other pieces that are presenting a challenge for them? And this report alone doesn't give us that data, but it is, it is a clue to us that there may be some additional questions that we want to ask as we move forward. And I know the High School Guidance Department and Jeff have been working on developing an alumni survey. And so, it's those kinds of questions that you might expect to see in the survey to help get at what is it that is getting in the way for students, if they perceive anything to be getting in the way of their success after they leave Cape Elizabeth High School. That's great. Last week, I guess, I had a book group meeting on, or book discussion on the book How Children Succeed, and Bill was there, along with Ruth Ellen and a handful of other folks. And the discussion really centered around, you know, how is stress impacting kids in our school district? What's, when is it too much stress? How, how are we supporting kids in dealing with that? And again, there's an article, it's probably about a month and a half old now, in the Huffington Post, that I think speaks really eloquently to the kinds of stress that we see in students and concerns that I've heard from students since I've been here, and that people who are involved in the mission, vision, and strategic planning process heard from kids and parents and stakeholders, and feedback that I continue to get, including an email from a parent a couple of weeks ago, who was talking about the anxiety that her child was feeling going into the last week of school prior to the vacation exams and papers, and that just dread, you know, that a young high school student was feeling already. And I think we have a responsibility as a community to kind of address that, talk about that, bring that issue into the forefront, and, and think about how we're supporting our kids as they move into their futures. I think the article that I will share in my newsletter this week, and I'll put a link to it on our website, speaks about this sense that many kids have that everything they're doing is about getting into a great college, and that sometimes they get there and they don't know what's next. And so, they're acting out in different ways with, you know, substance abuse or sexual activity, cutting, anorexia, those kinds of issues, because they aren't, they aren't really sure what lies ahead. They've invested all this time and energy into getting into college, and yet, now they're there. And there may not be a job for them when they graduate, or it may not be in something that they're really excited about, because they're not sure what they've excited about, what they're excited about, because they kind of lost their way in just trying to meet all the demands. And so, I, again, I think that it's a thought-provoking article, and, and I would encourage parents to have a conversation with their children about where they sit with these issues. Again, do I think that every child in Cape Elizabeth feels that way? Of course not. But I do think it is, it's a concern that I have heard repeatedly in my time here. So, I'd encourage people to, to read on that. In March, I'll be reading, the book discussion book will be World Class Learners by Yang Zhao, so we'll put information up about that title as well. Our robotics program is full at the seams, and first thing, they have waitlists for all of their programs. We are in preliminary discussions about whether or not it makes sense to offer a course for credit at the high school, potentially doing that outside of the normal school day to give kids whose schedules are already very full some flexibility in participating in that program. Yesterday, Scott and I met with representatives from our three parents' associations to talk about liability coverage. Our parents' associations fall in sort of a tricky place. They're not covered by the municipality, because we don't oversee their books or audit their funds or approve any of their expenditures. They aren't incorporated necessarily as 501(c)(3)'s, like the education foundation might be, and so, they fall into this sort of, officially, they're an unincorporated body, I guess, is the, is the title the insurance company might use. But just to meet with them, to make sure that they understand what liability they might have, certainly, any activity that we sponsor as a district that they support, that's our liability. But there are events that they sponsor, like the Pond Cove Challenge Harvest Festival, that where that they assume a fair amount of liability. And so, we wanted to make sure they understood those pieces and have a conversation about how we can support them with that. We had a similar conversation with our booster organizations at the high school back in early December. So, again, there is some conversation among those groups right now about how to move forward, conversations, you know, for our booster groups in particular about equity of funding, Title IX obligations, and how do we balance that out? So, people are learning.
Not to get into the weeds about that during your superintendent's report, but are there other models from other districts that do close or reduce that, that risk?
Well, there are a number of ways for groups to approach that. I mean, if you're speaking specifically about Title IX, yes, I mean, it can happen in a number of ways. Some groups might choose to form one booster organization and, and handle it that way. The other way that it's handled, excuse me, is to have, which is what, what we have in place currently, where groups turn in their reports to us of their expenditures, and we have a responsibility to kind of review those expenditures with an eye to equity. So, is the softball team, you know, presuming an equal number of members and equal, roughly equal cost for training and equipment, having the same amount of money spent on its program as the baseball team? And so, those are kinds of issues that we put on the table and had some good conversation about, I think.
Thank you for that work.
The only other thing I think on my list was, in mid-December, I was able to attend the superintendent's advisory council meeting of the college board, and that meeting included roughly a dozen other superintendents from across the country, talking about, hearing from the college board about some of the changes that they're making to assessments, I think that reflect, on their part anyway, a realization that analogies aren't all that matters anymore. They're really trying to connect their assessments much more to content learning that's occurring in schools today. I think they're also being very thoughtful about equity and access to opportunities. I'm sure folks have heard, college, people thinking about college have heard about their partnerships with Khan Academy, some of that work. But, you know, it's a unique opportunity for those of us who are there to have a, you know, conversation in a room, you know, about the size of these couple of tables put together with David Coleman, president of the college board, and to give him some feedback about what we see as needs, both the very large urban districts as well as smaller districts and more rural areas like ours.
What an amazing opportunity. Being in the throes of just submitting various college applications, I can tell you that I was really surprised at the number of schools that are now popping up in Sierra, you can, I'm sure, speak to this too, that SATs or ACTs are actually optional, and that many schools now have alternative electronic, what's the word?
Portfolios.
Portfolios that you can upload to show your learning in other ways as well, so that aligning the way in which we deliver assessments in our own district can maybe help meet some of the ways in which the college board, which really is the game, also looks at that. That's really interesting.
I, I think it's a growing trend. I think, unfortunately, the default for many places is still to look at those scores, but, but I, I would predict, as just as we think that at some point, the rising costs in higher ed are gonna break, because it's not sustainable. I think you're gonna see a similar trend with things like ACT and SAT and the emphasis on those scores. I think, I think that's a shift that's coming for us as a society. Not in the next year, too.
Meredith, not to go off topic, but just one feedback on, on assessments. And I think one thing we should look at is, you know, having a common language to discuss assessments. A child may say, "Oh, I'm, I'm being assessed for this," and the message is, well, that's, that's what we can assess, how the teachers are teaching you. But there's another assessment that the kids say, "Oh, you know, or that's the one you're have, you're being assessed," so you, you can, you get more, or in their mind, more or less. So, it may be helpful, and I, you know, to have some sort of common language, so everyone's on the same, not the same page, it's difficult, families are gonna communicate it differently, but I think that would help. "Oh, that's an idea," or a suggestion, just so, like, smarter balance, you know, someone asks me, "Oh, those are coming up," and I'm on the school board, and I would tell them, "I don't really have a clue what those are, but I'm sure I'll get some message, you know, a few days before that, you know, that's gonna happen." So, I don't have an idea, but I hear it so much, and it's so stressful that, you know...
And I, I think there's a lot we can do, you know, again, collaboratively, to sort of ratchet down that stress. I mean, assessments generally are, we're just seeing how your learning's going, right? We're trying to check in with you about what you're learning, how you're growing as a reader, how we can help you be better at that, how you're growing as a mathematician, and how we can help you with that. You know, I, I think we've, we've created, or our society has created this huge emphasis on the end result, and really, it's about the process. And, and I think that's our work as educators, is to support children in growing as learners. And, you know, the more that we can sort of back down that stress, the better off, I think, our kids are. But it's also an opportunity for, you know, for us, we do need to speak more with parents about it. You know, we use the word assessment, we throw it around all the time, because it's just part of what we do, and there are different types of assessments. But to help students and parents better understand that, I think, is, is a good message. So, I appreciate that feedback.
Is there any more for your superintendent's report?
I hope not.
Any other questions or comments for our superintendent on her report? Okay. Thank you very much for that detailed report. Onto new business, number six on our agenda this evening. May I have a motion around the Cape Elizabeth PAS budget?
Yes, I wish I could do all these next five items as one motion, but I can't. I move that we approve...
I could do it.
Please, David, I'm waiting for some amendments or a... I move that we approve Cape Elizabeth PAS Part I and II budget costs for 2015, '16 in an amount of $55,152.37, and Part I is $54,648.68, Part II, $511.69.
Wow. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
So, just as, again, a reminder to the board and to folks at home who may not be familiar with this process, PAS tuition is based on an average attendance, and we're assessed based on our five-year attendance. So, you can see that our attendance in October of 2012 was nine, and 10 students in 2013, and so, we're billed for nine and a half students' worth of the cost.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I think PAS is a great program. I wish more students would look into it, and that we could make part-day, full-day options for them. It's outstanding. So, I appreciate the work that we're doing to support students who go to PAS from middle school on through high school, so they get the idea in their head. It's a, it's a possibility. It's a choice.
There are options.
Yep.
There are multiple pathways.
Yes, there are.
May I have, show of hands in support? Seven. Thank you. May I have a motion in regards to the World Affairs Council?
Yes, you may. I move that we approve a World Affairs Council trip to Dartmouth College Model UN Conference April 10th to 12th, 2015.
Second.
A second motion?
Any comments, questions, or concerns?
If I could just clarify, if we're approving the trips that are set forth in the actions to be agenda...
As included in our packet this evening? Yes.
Say yes, Michael.
Are you suggesting an amendment to the motion?
Clarification.
A clarification. Are you okay with this clarification?
I absolutely am okay with it.
Are there further comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor? Seven. Thank you. May I have a motion around the girls' tennis team trip to Hilton Head, South Carolina, in April?
I move that we approve the girls' tennis team trip to Hilton Head, South Carolina, April 18th to 25th, 2015, is set forth in our agenda.
My second. Second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Coach Becca is here, if there are specific questions related to the trip.
We always ask, but I think it helps, students and, is it made, is the opportunity available for, you know, all students, high school stu... I'm not sure, just to get an idea of who...
All high schools have students that play tennis or have interest in tennis at the one of the places about August, September, October, December. So, yes, there's plenty of opportunities.
And are there opportunities for fundraising to support students who have a hard time making the...
We haven't done any fundraising, because it's not a mandatory, I don't think a mandatory amendment. I have a lot of hits, I mean, I have five of those this year, which we've ever done with a little junior, so...
Yep. And you'd bring it to our attention, or bring it to Jeff Thorax or Jeff Chad's attention if there was someone who wanted to go, who, but didn't have the funds?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity, and I know that this is something that per policy we need to ask, is there a similar, cheaper opportunity available closer to home during that time span that the students can take advantage of that would be less expensive or more fun?
Well, Danny Strummer was the girls' tennis team before, and so, he has been going on a couple of years. And so, that's sort of, we built a really nice relationship with the Danbury family to recreate an experience for the girls to have. But I have a lot of others that take tennis lessons in the winter, or you're like, in the center. So, there's opportunity for tennis, but this is an opportunity to go south and have a different experience, train better with top college coaches, and work with players that live at the academy, train at the tennis players.
Isn't this somewhat unique in that it is in the south, it is in the hot take of tennis? They've been playing against kids that play tennis year-round, some top instructors. So, it isn't really something you can't do compared to New England, you can't do something...
Oh, yeah. No, it's definitely, I mean, there's opportunities for kids to play tennis here.
Right.
There's an opportunity to...
Competition.
Yes.
He's just ready to vote.
All those in favor? Seven.
Enjoy it.
Wish we can leave. May I have a motion in regards to Ted Jordan's AP Government Class trip to Washington, DC?
I move that we approve Ted Jordan's AP Government Class trip to Washington, DC, March 25th to 27th, 2015, as set forth in our agenda packet.
Second.
My second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I would just say, this is a recurring trip, but it's a slight change in date from when they normally go. I think they've normally gone in April. Am I correct? Yes.
And is the 25th or the 27th, is there a break in March?
No.
Well, it falls around the conference window in March, I believe. It's not a break, per se, but I believe there is a release day for conferences, or partial release day somewhere that week. People are looking at me like, "I don't know what I'm talking about," so I may not, but I, somewhere in the back of my mind, think that there is a conference release day that week.
All those in favor? Seven. Thank you. May I have a motion regarding the co-curricular staff nominations?
Yes, I move that we approve the following athletic co-curricular staff nominations as listed in the agenda packet, item 6E.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Boys' expansion basketball, is that...
Happy to speak to that. Really, it's a, it comes up when we need it. We essentially set aside some money budgetarily in the event that we have more students try out for teams than, than we normally have budgeted for coaches. And I think we had a girls' expansion team last year. This year, it's a boys' expansion team. Some years, we have no expansion team. But we try not to cut students from the middle school program.
That's great.
I, I'm just not sure why, why, why they, like, in the grade seventh, why they can't be on one team? I mean, why can't there be a rotation? Why does there have to be an expansion team?
I think there are just too many students, and so, they would have very limited playing time if you had only one team. I think with... I think with 30 students, your playing time in a quarter is almost nonexistent.
If only five could play at a time here.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm wondering just because I feel badly for the expansion team.
Sure, I think most sports have sort of caps on how many people you can put on a roster, and so you can't have, you know, 30 students on your roster, so you field two teams and...
Suzanne, I think it's a good question, but having played on these way, way back, the fact you get to play is more important than whether you're on the number-one team or the number-two team or whatever. The fact you get to play is really what's the important thing.
Yeah, no, I know. I just know that the expansion team, because I have a son on the expansion team, has far fewer games than...
That's a different question.
Than the other team. And so that was new to me, and I didn't realize there was a roster limit.
Yeah, I think the challenge in scheduling is trying to then find equivalent experience with other schools, and because these numbers sometimes aren't known to us until students sign up at the time, it can be difficult to add games to the schedule.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Seven. Well, that includes basically our new business item six. Sorry, that wasn't as quick as you would have liked it there, Michael. On to number seven, item on our agenda this evening, committee reports. Do the chairs of our newly-formed committees have any fun facts they'd like to share?
I would just share briefly what I shared with the policy committee earlier today, which has to do mostly with your work, Joe, as the chair of that committee, and the work of the administrators on the committee even more so. As part of our long-running process to review the school board's policies, the policy committee has reviewed and the board has re-revised and adopted a total of, or deleted from the board policy level and demoted to sort of administrative policy, a total of 193 policies out of 251, which is about 77 percent. So the end is in sight. About 66 policies were reviewed and deleted, so we think that's about a third of the total number that had been looked at. So I think that suggests a more nimble policy manual that allows administrators to be, you know, to be administrating more frequently without trips to the board to have, to make changes that don't require board involvement. So that's my update today. Junior class officers were at the meeting to advocate for a change to policy JHCA, which is the use of unscheduled class time for high school seniors, to which seniors can leave the campus if they don't have a class. They did a great job presenting on behalf of their class, and I think we'll be able to put forward a policy that makes at least some of that time available to them more flexibly, so.
Excellent. Natalie, I understand that you attended today's meeting to bring forth your proposal. I, for one, would really like to applaud you and your class officers for being so forthcoming and thinking about how to benefit not only yourselves, because the window of opportunity for you to enjoy the fruits of your labor will be narrow, but to think about your legacy leaving behind, that's really helpful. Thank you, John. We knew we would be putting the policy committee in good hands. Michael, would you like to share anything about finance?
I do, but I'll do it as part of the upcoming meetings.
Okay. Any other committee appointments that we want to report out for committee work?
I will just note that we will need to set up negotiations teams for our bargaining with our custodial facilities, food staff, transportation group, as well as with our EdTech 1 administrative support and EdTech 2 and 3 bargaining units, so we should appoint those committees at an upcoming meeting.
Excellent. Kate and I, it looks like you and I have some discussion around those. Excellent. Any other comments or questions or concerns around committee reports?
I'm just saying that, gosh, PAS hasn't met since November, so there's no update other than approving the budget. And although the Innovation Committee has met twice now, we were supposed to meet a third time in December, and that will get rescheduled, but it's off to a great start. I've noticed how...
We're excited to hear what comes out of that.
I'm excited to see it go.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, seeing no more questions, comments, or concerns on committee reports, are there any items from either the board members or the public on upcoming school board agenda requests? Don't all speak at once. All right, seeing none. Announcements of upcoming meetings, Michael?
The next workshop and finance meeting is January 27th. Just to make sure everyone understands this very clearly, we will be discussing some long, longer-term drivers of school spending and revenue, such as, you know, enrollment, you know, wage growth in contracts. But let me be specific, we are not discussing any particular budget items. The budget won't be presented until February 10th, so I didn't want anyone to be confused in here. Oh, they spoke about the budget on January 27th. We're going to discuss, you know, trends like enrollment, you know, state revenue, some fuel costs, some buildings and ground, so I didn't want anyone to be confused. The budget will not be presented till February 10th.
Excellent. And to reiterate, if there are any questions for upcoming workshops, if you would like to submit those questions once we're doing the budget materials, if you want to submit questions to be considered during the workshop, you can go to the school board, School Board Contact, where I believe that there you can hit on the entire school board contact, and also just hit on an email from Michael, so that he can be prepared and gather as much information and consideration, both with our superintendent and our business manager beforehand, so he can intelligently answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Any other announcements of upcoming meetings?
Just the board retreat this Friday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at St. Albans, that's posted. The workshop on January 27th, the evaluation committee meets January 29th.
The subcommittee will also meet for student growth and student growth members, student growth measures is meeting Thursday, as other subcommittee working groups.
And the policy committee agreed to meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month, starting on February 24th at 3:00 PM in the Jordan Room for one and a half hours.
Could you say that again, please?
Sir, says the policy committee member.
Who wasn't at the meeting.
I'll read it.
Also, the HOPE is meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Cape Elizabeth High School Learning Commons.
Excellent, thank you for remembering that. See, coming up any meetings?
I haven't been in touch with them yet, actually.
They're, they, one moment. I believe they have an executive board meeting coming up.
Okay.
I can't see Mike Underwell enough to tell you when it is.
I'm sure it's on their website.
Who would be Mike Underwell?
Probably Mike Wood. Or Jim Britt or Mike Wood, and I can send you their contact information. Their meetings are all posted on their home website, yep.
And I know that we are, you just brought up a very good point, I know that we're just turning over to our new committee assignments. Is everyone hooked up with the committees that they've signed up for?
Wellness needs to get connected, which Barbara and I and Meredith can talk with Wellness.
And all the others are pretty ad hoc. Community Services Advisory Board, David, been having fun over at the Community Services building yet?
Nothing to report.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, if there are any other announcements of upcoming meetings?
Is that a quick question, reminder of the agenda for Friday?
Yes, Andrea will be sending it out hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, seeing no more questions, comments, or concerns about upcoming meetings, back to the most important item on tonight's agenda, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved?
Can I do that?
Is it a motion? All right, so this is my, have a motion?
Town Council does. So moved. David, does that work?
Really? No, right here, no.
Attained.
You didn't vote.
Oh, we did vote.
You got a hold of us to it!
Or have a second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
All right. I'm just so excited to gavel.